Meeting documents are available for review. Down next, Commissioner Heiburger and Craig or Carol, I assume, will be here at some point if you need a listening device. That takes us to our routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from October 1st, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,217,489.92.
Pay the bills.
Second with a question.
Okay, so motion and a second and a question by Commissioner Heiburger.
It's going to be for the auditor and I'm probably not going to be able to find it. I should have looked at it ahead of time. There was one of our, I believe it was our fire department that got both of their allocations in, they were supposed, their first and second quarter or their second and third quarter were all paid together. And so it was like $90,000 or something. Just wondering how they happened to miss one of their allocations. And I apologize because I'm not going to find it really quick. And I might have to ask you later then.
Good morning.
Good morning. Bob Lutz from the auditor's office. And the answer is, is I do not know. I think I'd have to go check with the treasurer's office to find out why they were allocated like that. We could certainly research it. And then also, I did last week, you asked about why we can't put them on automatic payments and we're working with IT. But apparently there's a thing that either they all get paid or none of them get paid, but we're working on that, okay, to find out the answer.
Following up on that. And I will too, see if I can find that. I apologize for not grabbing it just before the meeting, so.
So $95,379.
There you go. What category was it under?
Communications. No, it's Fire Protection Fund.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Bob.
All right. Any other questions or comments about the bills? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I think a lot of times our citizens aren't really aware of all the different things that we cover. Basically, we go from cradle to grave on many issues. But some of the outstanding issues this week, we had $681,000 in the Highway Department and $233,000 of that was for bridges, a bridge. $143,000 was for culverts. Then we had $191,000, which included some pass-through money going to Metro Communications. And then we had the fire thing. And we also had a decedent transports. That happens when someone dies without supervision of a medical person and they have to take them down to be looked at by our medical examiner. And they charge us 200 bucks a ride.
I would agree that I think anybody that spends any time looking through the bills that we approve every month would be astonished by the wide variety of services that are provided by the county. So thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right. I had a motion and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is reports, the Minnehaha County Highway Monthly Construction Project Update. I'd recommend that for your review. As Commissioner Barth noted, it's been a busy construction season for the highway and they've accomplished a lot in improving our roadway system. And those projects are highlighted in that. They have great pictures and it's a really informative update. So I really appreciate that. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So the next item are abatements recommended for denial. Chris Lilla, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Chris Lilla, equalization. Yeah, before you today, we have 10 veteran exemption abatements that I'm recommending for denial. It's not happy to recommend these for denial. And I'll just explain a little bit of the process. If a veteran or a surviving spouse is 100% permanently and totally rated disabled by the VA, they're eligible currently up to $100,000 of property tax exemption. There's some criteria to that. They had to own their home. They had to be rated permanently in total all by November 1st of the preceding year. Now, there is a statute, 10-440, SDCL 10-440, that says if they would have qualified but missed the deadline for application, they can request an abatement for that time period. So we've pushed through, you know, you've seen a lot of them recommended in past meetings where they were rated but they missed making application. And we've pushed those through with approvals. So these here, we've gotten quite a few this year. These here, I'll take some egg in my face. This was our office's error, if you will, when a veteran or a surviving spouse comes into our office to make an application for exemption. The past procedures were they fill out the application. We also had them fill out the abatement in the event that they could be approved. About 95% of them are eligible to receive the abatement. Once we, and this all happens in two minutes while they're at the counter. Once they leave, then we start researching and looking. These 10 that I'm recommending were not eligible to receive the abatement. So we've corrected our office procedures that before we offer the abatement to them, that we take the time with them there and look it over and research it there. These ones in particular are based on homeownership. So in order to qualify for the abatement, they had to own their home, had to occupy their home, had to be permanently and totally rated disabled by November 1 of 2017 for the '18 assessment year with taxes due and paying '19. All of these veterans had purchased their home after that November 1 of '17 date. So we, trying to assist them, took their applications, found out after the fact that we shouldn't have had them apply. So that's our error. We've corrected our procedures in our office to review those at the time the application is made before we offer that up. So that should not be occurring anymore. The only ones that should be filling out the abatement will be ones that we, within five-minute look, should be able to almost guarantee a recommendation of approval moving forward. So unfortunately, that's it. I would also like to share with the commission that currently for 2018, pay 19; for '19, pay 20. That veteran's exemption is $100,000 effective July 1 of this year. For 2020, pay 21. That exempt amount is going to be moving to $150,000. So just for the public's knowledge, there's nothing a veteran needs to do. It's automatically will be handled in our office. If there's a veteran that's been receiving the exemption, it will automatically be adjusted to the $150,000. So first $150,000 value is exempt for them.
Commissioner Benega?
Just questions. These 10 that are recommended for denial then would be eligible the following year, correct?
Yep. And I've submitted a memo in my last paragraph of the memo. Yes, when they came in to make application, this is for the '18 pay '19 that we can't approve. But for '19 pay 20, they are approved. They've got the exemption moving forward.
The second piece of that question is, how do people find out that the exemption is increased to 150? Because that's going to include more individuals. And I haven't really seen a whole lot of information being mailed out by anybody.
Yeah, there isn't. It was just a law change. It's an automatic mechanism. Anybody that's in our system that is currently receiving it will just be increased. There's nothing they need to do. There's no, and anybody, I mean, either you're eligible or you're not. And the ones that are eligible get that eligibility, that criteria and that rating from the VA. We have no part of that. So if they're not, they're not. And I've had veterans that are 100% paid, meaning they get 100% disability payment from the VA, but they're not rated permanent in total to service-connected. So they're not eligible. There's no, there's no, I don't know what's the word I'm looking for. There's no stepping into it. You can't be 85% and get 85%. It's 100% permanent total.
I guess my question is, is there some opportunity in the future for us to find out if there's a way to educate people a little bit better about when that exemption goes to 150? Because we will have some idea what the veteran's potential is, if you will, for applying for that because of our evaluations or valuations. And is there some way we can work with the VA to let people know?
I can contact the VA and let them know. I think they were probably instrumental in petitioning.
They were.
Legislature to make that adjustment. I know they wanted to. We did a lot of research. I know Carol and Craig was out in Pierre and was contacting me because originally they were looking, I think, at $250,000. And some of the comments that I'd made is, that's fine for us. But my comments to Craig was, this is so small in Minnehaha County with the total value. You know, anytime you give somebody an exemption or a tax break, someone else has to make up that difference. Because your budgets are still the same. So my suggestion to them at the time was, find a small county, you know. And I gave them Roberts County as an example. Small value with a huge percentage of veterans. Find out where that's going to impact. Because that is a big shift. It has the potential of being a big shift to the other taxpayers. So in the end, they stepped it back and rolled it back to the $150,000. I can contact the VA, make sure that they're aware. Again, I don't know that there's anything that our office could really do to illustrate that. Because I can't advertise it. I mean, I have no bearing on whether they're rated or not. That all comes from the VA. Either you are or not. And then if you are, this is what you get. And we'll take care of that automatically for those veterans.
It just seems that the people that are aware of that is a small group of people that frankly were involved in the process. But I don't think the general public who would be affected by that.
And that's why I brought it up today, to help spread that, spread that news that it is increasing. I'll contact the VA and see if they can do any flyers out there. Or, you know, again, when the veteran comes in there and he's looking for some relief or some benefits from the VA, I know at that point, they for sure advertised to him saying, okay, we're going to give you your letter. You need to get down to your equalization office because you are not eligible. You know, and it's a black and white line. Either you are or you're not. So.
Commissioner Barth?
Chris, I appreciate this discussion. And, you know, perhaps this could be written up and, you know, as an opinion piece that maybe then newspapers would take. And I know that as a veteran yourself, that this is of some concern. You know, the American Legion, the disabled American veterans, the VFW, if we were to, you know, send them messages. But I want to go in a different direction a little bit. Does there need to be a legislative change to allow sort of this transactional glitch from affecting people in the future? Is there a legislative solution to let people get the partial exemption for, you know, after the November 1 deadline, et cetera?
You know, you guys would have better contact with the legislators. I'm not able to lobby or do anything. We used to be able to lobby and petition as an association. We're not able to do that. I could do that as an individual for myself, but I couldn't represent you as the county. I couldn't represent the Assessors Association. I couldn't do any of that. So I think if that is something that you as a commission wanted to pursue, I think that would definitely be good conversation to say, you know. And I guess being a veteran and myself and my old teams and my units and things like that, I would almost like to see a prorated type system where if you were 85%, you could get 85% of the exemption. If you were 50, you could get 50. What would that do to the tax burden? I don't know. There is a lot of veterans out there that have disabilities of some form. When they came out with this, and I believe it was in like 2008, there was nothing at that time. So it was a big step to go to $100,000 exemption. And then there was a flaw in there. And if the veteran passed away, it didn't pass on to the surviving spouse. And we've dealt with one of those abatements already this year. That came in 2010 where if you're a surviving spouse of a veteran who has passed away, then you can continue to get that benefit as long as you remain unremarried and live in that house. So there's been some steps forward. Is this the end product, end-all, be-all? Probably not. I think that would be good conversation for you as a commission to speak with our state legislators and come up with some proposals or ideas. And I'd be happy to help and assist with my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? So Chris, as far as these particular people that we're taking action on today, has there been any communication with them? Do they understand that they didn't qualify?
No, not yet. Not yet. Because this has been in such limbo. We've been back and forth on them. Originally, we started out with 27 and worked with revenue because some of these other ones, then their rating wasn't on November 1, but they owned their home. And it's been a back and forth tussle and working with the state's attorney. And they've been great. And contacting Department of Revenue Attorney and getting some other clarification on this. So we've reduced the list down to simply homeownership. So we are doing that proratio. If they, if they own their home, but say they became, they got their letter in June of 2018, then we are exempting from June forward. We're doing that abatement process from June forward as a partial partial, if you will. So that was some major clarification. Otherwise, there would have been 27 of these. But we've got it hammered out and reduced the list down. Department of Revenue was very adamant about the homeownership. You had to own your home. Otherwise, there's nothing, nothing that you could do. And these all purchased their home after that date. So we've got their applications moving forward and they're in the system. They will be receiving it. It's just we can't credit in the rear for this one particular year.
So I'm just curious, since, I mean, we did have some, you've indicated that there was a little bit of a problem in our procedure that we've corrected. So how will these folks be notified?
They will get notification once you make your decision. They will get a letter from our office stating that they, that was acted on and it wasn't able to be approved.
Is it possible for you to reach out by telephone to visit those folks?
Yep, I can.
Okay. I just think sometimes.
It just depends. You know, the application, and that's one thing, I wish all of the, all of the applications and forms required a phone number. A lot of our applications don't anymore. You can't look them up in a phone book.
Okay. But to the extent you could, that would be, I think, nice.
We will see if we can contact these 10 individuals and give them a heads up that it was heard. And as well as they will get a follow-up letter from our office.
Okay, perfect. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Barth?
You know, Madam Chair, the, there's a former commissioner, now a judge, that once said, "Don't let the law stand in the way of justice." And I think we should allow these exemptions to occur.
Well, you can certainly make a motion. I'm not sure how we can act. We're also required to uphold the law, so.
I was just going to say, I, my requirement is whenever we have this application filled out, I am required by codified law to investigate it and give you a recommendation. There is nothing in the law that says you have to follow my recommendation. You could overrule it. You could, you could choose to do these. That's totally your decision.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just, I had looked earlier at the dates of when the houses were purchased. And I believe there was one in January. But then there was one that was July. I mean, so that's only a few months before the end of the year. And so, I mean, there's got to be a cutoff date at some point. I do feel sorry for the person that was only a month and a half or two months late. But if your house was bought the end of July or August or September, the year's almost over anyway. So.
Any further comments, questions? Not at entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to allow the veterans exemptions on these properties.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second? Is there another motion? I think the motion that Chris is recommending is that we deny the abatements requested for the parcels listed under six.
Make a motion to uphold the current law, which is to deny these abatements.
Second, if I could comment?
Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, to Commissioner Heiburger's point, a lot of these properties were purchased after, well, they obviously all were purchased after November 1. And when you buy a property, when you go to the closing, the taxes are prorated and the prior owner pays the taxes based on the assessment without the abatement. So, I mean, if we approve this, people would be getting actually a refund that probably should be split with the prior owner of the property. And in some cases, it might be two months, it might be eight months. When you buy the property, you, most of the time, know what the property taxes are. And down the road, you file for that, either owner occupied or veterans or whatever. So I don't think anybody went into buying a property not knowing full well what their property taxes were going to be due. And probably then, based on the assumption that I can apply for the abatement. You don't get an, we don't prorate the abatement to the prior owner, is my, is my point.
Correct.
So for that reason, I mean, it would be nice to, and also as a veteran, thankfully with no disability, to, you know, do something for those people. But at the same time, it would just be very, very muddy and very difficult to sort out. So I'm in favor of the denial.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
No.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to item seven, notices and requests. There are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Takes us to public comment. Since there's only two people in the audience, if neither of you have any desire to make public comment. Oh, there's three people. Okay. I assume the auditor's not coming forward for public comment?
Be a while to get there.
Okay, so that takes us to regular business. Next item is to consider a motion to approve action related to the disposition of tax deed property RDID 65784. Auditor Lutz, good morning.
Good morning. Bob Lutz from the auditor's office. And as you'll recall, last week, we did, the commission approved the findings of the appraisal board. And the RDID 65784 was on that. However, on the memo that was prepared, it was inadvertently left off. And so Commissioner Bender, it was your preference that we bring it forward this week again, and that's what I'm doing. So the commission action that I'm requesting today is to declare RDID 65784 a surplus for sale at public auction and approve the minimum bid amount for the property. Number two, to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of sale for public auction on October 26, 2019 at 10:00 a.m. And to that end, Olivia was able to meet the publishing deadlines on this here. And so we're good in that regard.
Commissioner Barth?
Bob, I see this as a significant value on this property. Do we get to keep that value? Or do we just get to keep the taxes that are owed?
That has happened twice in my experience. And one of them happened just before I got here with Sue Ralston, a building out in, out in Sherman, South Dakota. And then we took one last year and we distributed those proceeds to the other taxing entities. However, that question has come up. And I believe that that'll be something that we'll have to examine before this sale comes. So there's, I get, I get requests from people all the time that want to know what happens to the excess tax deed funds. And I've consistently told them that it happens so seldom. And I don't know what they're, what they're thinking, if they can get a hold of that excess money or split it with that person or what. But like I say, there must be something in laws in other states. Because those have been people from other states doing that request. I do think we need to clarify that in South Dakota here. Also, I would mention that this property is the one that has the federal tax lien. And it's a little north of $19,000 on it. And that would be treated like any other lien that's on that property. And it would be up to the purchaser to do a quiet title action on that and remove that lien from the property.
So Bob, what happens if there aren't any bidders on the property?
Then typically, we have rolled it over to the next year. And I had that situation out in Humboldt one year where I had quite a large lot and the bids weren't sufficient. And so we held it over. And the next year, somebody showed up and gave us what we needed.
So when you hold it over, does the county take ownership of it at that time?
Take ownership of it and we have to maintain it, yes.
Okay. And do we have an obligation to satisfy the federal tax lien?
No, we do not.
Okay. Commissioner Karski?
So you buy the lien, the tax.
No, you're not buying a lien. You're buying a property.
No, you're buying the federal tax lien. When you buy that property, that lien doesn't follow the person. It stays at that property. So you have a liability on a property of the federal tax lien that you got to satisfy in order to clear up the title.
As far as the new owner purchasing that lien, I would defer to the state's attorney's office.
I think that's accurate, Madam Chair. I mean, the lien isn't going to go away. So probably take into account their purchase price, how much they want to pay for it, knowing that that debt is there.
Yeah.
Other questions for the auditor? I'm curious, was there somebody living in this property at this time?
You know, I have been by there twice. And I think, looking at, there's curtains in the windows and they've been moved a couple of times. I've been there in the daytime when most folks are working. I've made an attempt to go there. I left a card on the door with a note, and I've gotten no response. They've also been through the serving and notification process, which is rather extensive. And there's been no response.
Is there any plan to evict this person before the sale?
There are two properties with people, three properties with people, no, two properties with people living on them that are on the sale this year. And I have not made any attempt to evict anybody. As you recall, last year, I did request an eviction. This commission did not want to do that. That person came in the next day and paid up in full. So, and we have sold properties with people on them before, people living in them before. And then it became the duties of the new homeowner to make a deal with them or evict them.
So I'm curious on this property, if we go back to my scenario where I asked if, what would happen if there were no bidders? So in this situation, if there's no bidders on the property, there's somebody living in the property, the county ends up owning the property, and now the county is a landlord?
That is correct. And we can either go after them for the rent or we can start an eviction process at that point. And if that does not sell, that would be my recommendation because this is a pretty nice property. And I think that the county is at risk letting that person live in there for another year.
Commissioner Bender, that has been brought up in previous years. Because if this resident would happen to break their neck or something on the property, it's our property where they were injured. And so we can't afford that kind of liability with, with people staying there.
Commissioner Karski?
So that brings up an interesting point, not just from a liability perspective. And this is a fairly, you know, nice home, like you said. We own a home. Do we add it to our property insurance?
I would think we would. And that'd have to be investigated as well.
I mean, if it was a big commercial building, a $2 million commercial building that we ended up owning, we'd probably want to insure it, right?
And we'd want that in place by the date of the sale, just in case.
Pardon me?
We'd want that in place, that insurance. We'd want to make sure you contacted the insurance company and had that insurance coverage available if we ended up inadvertently owning that property at the end of that day.
And if I, if I recall this correctly, I think we've got a 30-day rider on that before we have to put, it's covered for 30 days before we have to take action to put it on.
Okay. Good. All right. Lots of interesting questions. Any other questions for the auditor here?
Make a motion to declare RDID 65784 for surplus for public auction.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Then we're looking for a motion to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of public auction on October 26, 2019 at 10:00 a.m.
So move.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Takes us to item 11, which is to consider a motion approving a resolution to transfer surplus property RDID 63567 to an adjacent landowner and authorize the county treasurer to issue a quitclaim deed and the auditor to abate outstanding taxes, interest, and penalties levied against the property. Auditor Lutz, good morning.
Thank you for doing that portion of my work, Chair. Yes, in this case here, last week, you did approve the auditor's office to reach out to the neighbor to combine these joining properties or to combine, to transfer the ownership of the adjacent property to the homeowner that was next door. I called her that day, after that day, and she was delighted to do it. She came in, wrote me out a $30 check for the register of deeds and signed the combined tax form for equalization. And what that does is she will get the same tax notice for both properties. She would get a tax notice sent to her for both properties on that, on that, on this deal. Does not combine them in the sense that it moves into one RDID. It would still be two RDIDs. But this, this property was next door to her. She'd been mowing it for years. And she said, "Lest, you know, it's coming, the chicken is home to roost," she says. So she's delighted to have it. to have it.
Any questions? Now I'd entertain a motion.
So moved to allow this transfer. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? If not, roll call vote please.
Hieburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Good. And then, you know, Carol had sent me out the questions that you had, Jean, and I think that we've answered all of them unless there's another one.
No, I think so. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, so that takes us to item 12, which is consider a motion to approve a five-year transportation plan. DJ Boothey, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Today I have before you the five-year transportation plan that's required by the South Dakota Department of Transportation for the Bridge Improvement Grant Fund Participation Program. Every year, the commission sees our five-year plan two different times, one during our formal county budget process, and then again through this approval process through the Bridge Improvement Grant. This year, we did have a couple changes, four specifically, that we added four bridges to the, the project plan that you approved in the budget process, and the rest of it basically remains the same. We had during our bridge inspections, four bridges that came up as a little bit worse off than what we thought as far as their condition goes. One of them specifically, we decided that we wanted to design yet this year and, and have it under construction for next year. That's a newly posted structure on County Highway one fifth, or County Highway 122. And we don't like to have posted bridges on our, on our county highway system, and so we decided to replace that next year. And then the other three were just general degradation of the structures that was a little bit higher rates than expected, and we feel that those are going to compete very well in the ranking system that the DOT does. And in reviewing their awards from previous years, we think that they're going to be successful in, in getting some Bridge Improvement Grant funding. And so we added those to the five-year plan, and, and hopefully we'll get some funding. We're proposing that we pay for fifty percent of the replacement costs using county funds and then fifty percent bridge funds, or Bridge Improvement Grant funds. In whole, our five-year plan includes fifteen bridge replacements and about sixteen miles of reconstruction of county highway, and then a whole bunch of preservation and maintenance work. That, that work is really subject to change every year. We, we look at every single project in our five-year plan, and we reprioritize everything based on its current conditions. Our revenues every year range from thirteen to fourteen million dollars. In this specific five-year plan, our expenses range from thirteen point eight million dollars in 2023 to sixteen point one million dollars in 2020. And, and those actually change quite a bit because of bid prices and, and revenues, they fluctuate. And so with that, if you have any questions, I'll stand by. Otherwise, I ask for your approval of the five-year transportation plan in accordance with the Bridge Improvement Grant Fund requirements by signing the attached certification form.
Commissioner Hieburger.
Just a couple of comments. DJ, thank you, great report. I ran through everything as best I could. It's, it's long and it's a lot of numbers. My comment would be that I thought it was interesting that you had a public meeting and invited all township directors, or elected people from their townships to attend this meeting, and there were over a hundred of them, and only one person showed up. Now, your townships mostly, what they're dealing with is their roads and their bridges and that stuff. I think it's very interesting and quite sad that only one person showed up for a public meeting that they were all personally invited to. So I don't know how, it's not your responsibility to improve upon that, but how do we improve upon that? Do we do this meeting during their, I think they have twice a year, or do they have quarterly a, a township meeting, and it's well attended? So it just surprises me that when the county calls a meeting about what's important to them, that no one comes.
Madam Chair.
Your part.
Cindy, that's a great point, and I think the way to get people there would be to let it slip that there's a secret meeting where we're going to discuss this, and people would show up or demand to be, to get in. I'm not kidding.
No, you're not kidding. It's very insightful about human nature, actually, that comment, so.
I do appreciate the comments. We've pondered over this quite a bit in our office. The timing of this meeting is, is basically set by the, by the DOT, so we can't really change it to line up with one of their meetings. We've talked about anything from offering free cookies and juice to other types of incentives to get the townships there, and, and I, we all agree that it's unfortunate that they, they don't attend. And it's not just the townships, the municipalities, school districts, there's a lot of stakeholders that are involved in our five-year plan that, our attendance the last two years were three people, so we had a pretty significant reduction this year, percentage wise.
Other questions? Commissioner?
DJ, I do appreciate all the work you guys do to put this together, and my question is kind of a follow-up to what Cindy's already asked, is when this is all approved by the county, how much input or feedback do you get from the state?
Other than formatting of the report, none. We, we do get commented that we have a nice report, but as far as project selection or anything like that, they don't participate in that.
So with their match and their input and all that other regulations that we deal with on a regular basis, there's no feedback after we finalize it?
No. No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth.
What is the sufficiency of like thirty-three and stuff? Could you explain that a little further?
So there's a, a term called the federal sufficiency rating, and what that is, it was a kind of a magic formula that the FHWA put together several years ago to try to have one number that's all encompassing, that will give you a general idea of what the condition is of a, of a bridge or a structure. And it, and it has a bunch of different variables in there, condition ratings and, and traffic loading, I think, on that structure. And it's a zero one hundred, zero to one hundred scale. One hundred is a brand-new structure, and zero is, is completely probably removed, I suppose. I've never seen a zero structure. I've seen them down to about fifteen, and those are bridges that you would typically close. And so when we're talking a structure that's got a sufficiency rating in the thirties, that's a really strong candidate for replacement. If it's in the seventies, for example, we'd probably be doing a rehab project or a preservation project on that to try to keep it a high rating. But it's, like I said, it's just supposed to be a general idea of what kind of condition that is.
Commissioner Karski.
You and I need to meet again soon as your liaison. We haven't done that in a while, and it's on me, I apologize, but let's set up a time to meet. But looking at the big grants, the bridge improvement grants, and for twenty twenty, you do have one at fifty-nine-five, and in twenty twenty-one, there's one that, there's a note to the side for three hundred and sixty-one thousand that the county portion is not included. But I'm assuming that, you know, the fifty-nine-five we're applying for, but we have to competitive process, I know, on those grants. Did we fund, did we budget for that one, for the, what would it be?
What year were you saying, twenty?
Twenty, twenty twenty, next year. Looking at your chart in the pink section.
So we're not applying for Bridge Improvement Grant funding for that because we're moving into design in 2019 in order to be able to do the project in 2020.
So are we talking the fifty-nine thousand five hundred, or are we talking the three hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred?
The three hundred and sixty-one thousand, I'm not seeing the same numbers that you're seeing off the paper.
Projected revenues and sources page. It's basically your first chart.
Oh, okay. Maybe we can review these offline so I can-
Yeah.
-get my, wrap my head around this, but I think that there's a structure that we're hoping to get grant funding for immediately, that we're paying upfront this year's budget to design it, and then we'll apply for the construction administration cost and the, and the construction cost for 2020.
So the hope is that they'll retroactively pay that then?
We can ask for them to do that. We'll take a look at the numbers prior to the application to see if we think we can be competitive or not.
Okay, okay. And the only way we get the bridge improvement grants is because we have the wheel tax.
That's correct. Yeah, you're required to have a wheel tax if you're a county applying for the Bridge Improvement Grant funding.
Okay. Thank you, DJ.
Other questions? I was curious about the comment you made that you, you thought that four of our structures would particularly be suited for the Bridge Improvement Grant program. I was wondering if you could just explain what it is about those structures or their, their issues.
Sure. The DOT has a formula that uses condition ratings, traffic, and county match in a formula that they put together that gives you a point-based system. And in the previous year's awards, the number of points that were given to awarded projects, I think, got down to the forties. So you only had to get forty-four points or something like that in order to be awarded a project. And when, when we use their formula and apply that to every single one of our structures in a spreadsheet, these four bridges had more than forty points in their, in their ranking system or rating system. And so we feel like, assuming that the, the approved bridges for this next application process don't have a big drastic change in the, the ratings for the awarded projects, that will be competitive in, in the award process.
Okay. So then just a real basic question, and I know you've talked about this in a little bit further, but obviously a lot of work goes into this plan, and I was wondering if you could just give us a little bit of insight as to how you prioritize projects and how you decide how they flow out in this five-year plan?
Sure. So it, it's a really complicated process that we spend a lot of time on, but real generally, we put our bridges into two different categories, on-system and off-system. The on-system bridges are on our county highway system, the off-system bridges are on the township system. And the first thing we actually do is rank them by the federal sufficiency rating, just because that's kind of an all-encompassing way to look at the conditions. And then of those, once they're ranked in that, we start looking at more specific rankings of, of different systems on that bridge. For example, the deck, or the superstructure, or the substructure, we'll look at the conditions of those specific elements, and, and they each have their own rankings that are, or those ratings that are given through the bridge inspection process. And if something is ranked as critical or really poor condition, it's going to give us more points during the rating system in the DOT's formula. And so, or even, that's a big indicator that we either need to do a rehabilitation project or a replacement project. Once we have those, the bridges that are in poor condition or critical condition or, or have a big change from the last inspection cycle, we start to narrow down which ones we think are better candidates for rehab or replacement. And once we have a handful of both on-system and off-system structures, we start looking at traffic volumes, other projects around the area that are going to impact detour routes and that kind of thing, or sometimes projects that can be grouped together. For example, this winter, we're doing two bridges that are literally right around the corner from one another. One of them, we definitely could have held off of replacing for a couple of years, but because we could bid them together as one project and gain some efficiencies in the construction cost there, we decided to bid them both together. And so that's just a real quick overview of how we look at making the selection for prioritization.
One thing that I did hear you say towards the end that I was going to ask you about is that sometimes I think the public thinks there's some great big master plan to totally screw with their life as much as possible and organize as many construction projects-
Sure.
-to make their commute or whatever is difficult, but that is something that you guys are considering is the-
Absolutely.
-the flow of traffic and how.
Consider it, yes, absolutely. Understand that we are a pain in everybody's commute on a pretty regular basis, of course. This year, we touched more miles on our system than we ever have since I've been here. We have a lot of bridge projects, a lot of culvert projects. We had flooding twice this year, and so really driving around our county this year has been terrible.
Challenging.
Challenging. It's a good bird.
Okay.
Madam Chair, since we've got him here, what's the plan for snow?
It's not going to snow this year.
Good.
It sounds like Friday, we're going to have a potential for maybe a couple inches of snow, probably rain first. Our trucks are, are basically ready right now. We're putting up some finishing touches on some of the sanders right now, so we'll be ready if it comes.
Is there anything our citizens should know?
That first snow of the year, the roads still have kind of grime and dirt on the, on the surface, and so the roads are extra slippery. We're not used to driving in the, in the snow and the ice, and so just take extra caution and, and allow some extra time.
All right. If there are no further comments, I'd consider a motion.
We approve the five-year transportation plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that takes us to item thirteen, is our liaison reports. Commissioner Hieburger.
This last week, I attended the Safety and Justice Challenge Conference, which is a part of our grant application process that we attend their convenings. There were nine people from this Minnehaw County that went, and also a delegation from, from Pennington County, since we are both recipients of that grant. The main focus of this year's, although we did talk about racial and ethnic disparities, which I talked about last week, was putting together a five-year communication plan. I was not a part of that particular breakout session, but we will be working as a group of nine people in the next month or so to finalize our details on that communication plan. Communication plan has to do with what the Justice and Safety Group is doing in our county. I also attended a breakout session with Native American relationship, which was very good. There were Native American people from the state of South Dakota that attended this conference that were a part of it, and so we just had really good dialogue. There were other states too that were represented with, that have reservations on them, and so we had really good dialogue about ways to reach out and try to make things work better between us. And I also attended a jail review workshop, which Minnehaw County, as part of our Safety and Justice Challenge, has just started a jail review team. I'm not sure if that's what we call it, but where they look at who is in jail and review if their, if their case is progressing through the court system in an appropriate fashion and in appropriate timeframe. And so they think they meet every week or every other week, I think it's every other week. And so I went to one of those that another state is doing, it was very interesting, so.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? I would just note, as a liaison to the Sheriff's Department, that our contract with Lincoln County that we negotiated as part of the, when we were putting together the financing and, and the jail project, did take effect as the first of October, and when you look at our jail numbers, you'll see that we now have about forty-five inmates from Lincoln County, which is a benefit to Minnehaw County because that helps to fund our operational costs with the jail, and it's a huge benefit to Lincoln County as well as they had been incurring lots of expense and difficulty in trying to find adequate housing for their inmates. So that did take effect, and it does have a fairly dramatic effect on our numbers, but with the addition of the, of the floor on top of the existing jail, we're able to handle that adequately, and things seem to be going well, so. All right. If there are no other liaison reports, I entertain any new business? Is there no new business, any old business? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaw County Commission.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will try to reconvene right about ten o'clock, about ten minutes. Thank you.